Good afternoon, everyone. Please join us in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I'm calling to order this special hearing to discuss the potential acquisition of the 7.4-acre parcel of the Our Lady of Charity property. Mr. Wills, deliver the opening statements, please.
Yes, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this special meeting of the Brookhaven Borough Council. This meeting has been convened for the express purpose of informing, discussing, and considering the proposed municipal acquisition of approximately 7.4 acres of property presently owned by Our Lady of Charity Catholic Church, located on the 200th block of Upland Road. It is worth noting that the Our Lady of Charity School, along with its abundant acreage of open green space and generous wooded area, is regarded as a special place in the hearts and minds of many of our borough residents. Those residents, their children, and perhaps even their grandchildren receive their elementary school education under the loving guidance and nurturance of the good sisters of the Immaculate Heart of Mary. It is no small exaggeration to say that for some of our citizens, the OLC school property is considered hallowed ground. In the spirit of full disclosure, I readily acknowledge that I am also a product of eight years of Catholic elementary school education under the tutelage of the Sisters of the Immaculate Heart of Mary by way of Our Lady of Fatima School in Sea King. Regretfully, both schools have long been closed, symptoms of a shrinking Catholic footprint in Delaware County and throughout the Archdiocese of Philadelphia. But that is a story for another day. By way of brief history, the Our Lady of Charity School opened its doors to 417 students on September 13, 1954. It quickly became a thriving academic institution, educating generations of Brookhaven children and those from surrounding communities, until its fateful closing by the Archdiocese in June 2011, ostensibly due to declining enrollment and increasing cost. The two-story building, for the most part, has laid vacant for the past 13 years, with little change in its status quo. More recently, the Archdiocese has expressed an interest in entertaining proposals to sell off approximately 7.4 acres of this property abutting Upland Road, which would include the old school building as well as the two-story former convent. Last summer, the Archdiocese purportedly received an offer to purchase the property from a commercial landscaping contractor who wished to pave the green space behind the school. The paving was to extend to the tree line that borders Parkside and Upland Boroughs. The expanded parking area was to accommodate the company's large fleet of commercial vehicles, which would have been expected to ingress and egress the site during the early morning hours each day. Such a proposed use would have necessitated Borough Council's consent to a zoning change from its present residential zoning to commercial zoning. Approximately four acres of open green space in the borough would have been forever lost. In light of the clear adverse effect to the residential quality of life to the adjacent homeowners, the borough advised both the proposed buyer and the Archdiocese, respectfully and yet firmly, that no such proposed zoning change would be forthcoming. During this process, the borough was advised that the proposed sale price for the property was approximately $1.3 million. The events of last summer brought renewed interest to Borough Council in considering the possible acquisition of the 7.4-acre parcel for use as municipal open green space and passive recreation for borough residents. The preservation of open green space, no matter how large or small, is and remains one of Borough Council's highest priorities. I trust that we can all agree that the existence of open green space is a rapidly diminishing commodity here in Brookhaven Borough. Nonetheless, the borough has within its grasp a unique opportunity, if so approved by the collective voices of our citizens, to acquire one of the largest remaining parcels of open space in the borough. On September 27 of 2023, at the direction of Borough Council, I corresponded with Father James Lyons, pastor of Our Lady of Charity Church, to extend a conditional offer to purchase the property under and subject to the following due diligence criteria. Number one, that there would need to be substantial public support for the project to be determined at a future public hearing. Number two, an acceptable real estate appraisal report establishing the fair market value of the property. Three, adequate financing to be secured by the borough for the purchase price, including obtaining municipal grants for property acquisition. And four, successful subdivision approval for the subject parcel, which cost would be borne by the borough. Today's town hall meeting is being convened as part of the borough's due diligence criteria in evaluating the necessary level of public support in order to proceed with this project. Your voices and opinions are important and council wants and needs to hear from all of you. The borough did obtain an independent real estate appraisal report in October 2023, establishing the fair market value of the property at $1,550,000. The borough has been extremely aggressive in pursuing any and all possible grant opportunities to help finance the acquisition of this property. I am pleased to advise that last month the borough received a $500,000 Delco Greenways grant from the Delaware County Council to finance this project. The borough has also made application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for a $1.5 million state grant. In addition thereto, the borough has been in communication with its representatives in the Pennsylvania General Assembly for various grant opportunities through their legislative offices, sometimes referred to as walking around money. Assuming there is sufficient public support, the borough's goal in this endeavor is a simple one: to take all necessary legal steps to acquire the property and to do so at the least possible cost to the taxpayer. On December 14 of 2023, Council President Terry Heller, Borough Engineer Charles Catania, and myself met with Father Lyons, pastor of Our Lady of Charity, their business manager, and their attorney to discuss moving forward with the property acquisition. It was a productive meeting in which the church appeared receptive to the borough's preliminary offer to purchase the parcel for the sum of $1.3 million. However, earlier this month, I received a phone call from the attorney representing Our Lady of Charity and the Archdiocese of Philadelphia. The attorney advised that the Archdiocese had received a, quote, verbal offer, unquote, to purchase the property for a, and I quote again, substantially higher value, unquote, than the $1.3 million figure which had been discussed between the borough and the church at our meeting on December 14. The attorney would not identify the interested buyer, nor the amount of the verbal offer. The attorney did indicate that the proposed use of the building and the property would be for another religious affiliated school. It would not be a charter school, which is financed with taxpayer dollars. As you may know, verbal offers to purchase real estate have no legal significance and mean nothing. The attorney further advised that he would contact me should this proposed buyer actually reduce its verbal offer to writing. Since the date of that conversation earlier this month, there has been no communication between the Archdiocese and the borough. As I indicated in my earlier remarks, the subject property is zoned for residential use under the borough's zoning ordinance. The Our Lady of Charity School was permitted to operate at the site by what land use attorneys commonly refer to as a pre-existing, non-conforming use. Because the property has not been utilized as a school for 13 years, there is a legitimate zoning issue as to whether the property may be lawfully utilized in the future as a school under the theory that such educational use has been abandoned by the property owner over a long period of time. In other words, a zoning determination for its use as a school may need to be properly adjudicated by the borough zoning officer, the borough zoning hearing board, and/or the courts of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. That is a process that could become quite lengthy should the church wish to seriously entertain such an offer from this presently unidentified buyer. Despite this most recent development that has been thrown into the mix, I can assure you that the borough has a number of tools in its toolbox to lawfully acquire the property should borough residents express their overwhelming approval to do so. It may not be a productive exercise to disclose today precisely what those legal strategies and procedures may be. However, I can assure you that the borough will not be deterred. It will not be sidelined. It will not be restrained from acting should it be the consensus opinion of our community that this valuable acreage of property be forever preserved and protected as open green space and passive recreation for the benefit of our residents.
That is my opening statement, Mr. President. I thank you for that. They're clapping because you're done, I believe. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I want to add, before we ask if council would like to make any additional opening statements, that when the proposed sale was brought to us in July, the immediate reaction by the previous council was, we can't upend Southern Brookhaven with the proposed project that was going in there. And as you all now know, that would have required a zoning change to commercial. There are other options for apartments or low-income housing, as was attempted by Our Lady of Charity back in 2017. It is my opinion the public does not want either in the borough. I was shocked at the affordability of this land. Mayor Mike Hess, back in 2017, asked Father Lyons, I believe it was Father Lyons or was it the previous pastor? Might have been the previous pastor, what price they would give the borough. It was $4 million way back then. So the council at the time completely forgot about it. So the price, the price is right. And so council pounds. We picked up three new members of council in January, and they seemed to agree. So here we are. But make no mistake, the public will rightfully decide. Does anyone else from council have opening statements? You might have rebuttals towards the end if you don't have any.
I just want to give some information. Okay, just for people who don't know, this building has been here about 30 years. Our bond issue will be up. The last payment is January 2025. We're done with our debt. So we are debt-free as of January of next year. Delco has pledged $500,000 toward the purchase of this property.
Which is no match, Mr. Wilson. Yeah, and it's a no.
Well, $500,000 is a decent chunk of money. But that's the only thing I wanted to let you know, that the rest we would have to finance.
The math, let's assume we have to pay the full appraised value, considering that there's an alleged offer out there, whether you believe it or not. I put the math on social media. You're not all on social media. You would be looking at a $20 per year cost to each household, not resident each household. However, council has found that money. You can never guarantee a lack of tax increase, as you all know, painfully so last year. But we can guarantee that there will be no tax increase as related to the acquisition of the property. Now, in the spirit of transparency, that building is a fortune should a future council decide to renovate it. You're looking at $2.8 to $3 million. I don't want to leave any facts out. $300,000 to demolish it. Anyone with half a brain would say, unless you got a full $3 million no-match grant, would be unfortunately, the school would have to come down. It would be, if this council were still in charge, it would be respectfully done, I'm sure, with some sort of monument to it because of how dearly we hold it. But that's what I have for now. A lot of the other facts are in the letter. And I will say, I appreciate you all coming out, whether in support or opposition. So if there's nothing else from anyone else from council, we're going to go right on ahead and open it up to public discussion. If there's anyone who would like to speak, kindly approach the podium and state your name and street for the record. Come on up, Mr. Schlott. Good afternoon, Dave.
It's on.
Should be on.
It's on.
Isra Benton. Make sure they state their name in that address, too.
Actually, if they're signing in, they don't have to state their name.
Okay.
Thank you. My name's Dave Schlott. I live on Edgewater Lane. Been a resident since 1977. And charity has been a landmark. I used to drive by just about every day. And in the earlier days, we would see the kids going to school, leaving school. And it was happy times for them. But as so stated in the history, you know, the decline in enrollment and then, next thing we know, the school's empty. And I would still drive by it and wonder, what's going to happen to that? There has to be another use for it. And then, when you came out and when I heard about the borough that it was going to be for sale, and I said, I hope they keep it residential and as open space. As so stated, Esquire Wills, he said that there's a lot of good uses for it and that we can keep it residential. And I'm all for that. And even for the price, all the prices and figures that were stated, I think it's a good deal. I'll give you $20 right now.
Give it to Ms. Wiki down there.
I'll give it to the.
She actually accepts Venmo also.
You know, nobody likes to see a tax increase. But if it's necessary, I think it's a good use tax increase. It's, I mean, there's other things that we need tax increases for, like cost of living and stuff like that. And as taxpayers, we all realize that. But I think this is a win-win situation. And as I stated in earlier remarks about the property, it's possible that the rest of the church property could go up for sale in five or 10 years.
No, it's my belief that you're looking at one to three, right out of their camp's mouth. One to three.
Okay.
One to three. They've made no secret of it. It's been one to three for the last 10 years, I must say. It has.
Just so we're clear, I believe the total acreage of
Ten and a half, about.
Is about, I was going to say about 11 acres or so is what the Our Lady of Charity, the Archdiocese, that whole complex is approximately 11 acres. Right now, is what we'd be looking at is approximately seven and a half acres, which of course would include the Charity School and the convent. The church and the rectory would still remain with Our Lady of Charity Church and the Archdiocese. But, you know, I agree, Mr. Schlott, down the road, there may be additional acreage available for sale, depending on factors that, you know, none of us can control in this room. But we have to be open to that future possibility.
Let's not burden anyone with further debate on the remaining two and a half to three acres, whatever, three acres, I believe it is, but.
Because, you know, when I first heard about the proposal to buy that and the one I'm against commercial, and that would be more of a detrimental.
Most folks are, all things considered. We had an opportunity to intervene back in 2013 when retail sites purchased 30 acres of lush forest, really, in the Ball Field, right directly behind us for the price of $10 million. $10 million wasn't affordable. The same grant programs were available, but they were few and far between and much more competitive than they are now. $10 million is, off the top of my head, is going to cost you $300 per taxpayer. But eminent domain was an option then. It was never mentioned by the council at the time. It probably should have been. It would have been if this group of fine folks was up here. What we ended up with, I think, was positive. And they gifted 10 of the 30 acres to the borough, including five acres that remained lush forest. It's the best maintained shopping center, between that and Lowe's. So the end result was good. I was opposed to it at the time. But this is not a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, but it's possibly a, one or two times this opportunity will come up. Between this and the remaining Chester Water land up on Harrison Hill, Dutton Mills, there's 13 acres left up there. And there was a gentleman's agreement of sale between CWA and retail sites to sell that, as we detailed in my first meeting as council president way back in January of 2020. But that was put on hold when Aqua swooped in and attempted their hostile takeover of Chester Water. But I know that the council at the time was opposed to what they wanted to do there. So, and that also requires much more remediation. As you know, there's a clean landfill there. So council might not be able to afford to do much there. So this may be a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, unless the Christian Academy decided to close and gave up their seven acres. So, or put their seven acres up for sale. So, yeah, it's a rare chance to preserve green space.
I think if the public, if you get to 70% consent from the public to go along with a purchase, which will come up, I know in March you're going to have.
March 4th to the 8th, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., right here, out in the lobby. Yeah.
Okay. But, uh, you know, and even if, trying to decide what to do with the school, I mean, we have, there's a real estate market out there, we could reach out to real estate markets and say, what do you think a town would need that we could use that for and keep it residential?
And let's, let's be realistic. Councils change. A future council, uh, I, I know the, the back portion, the current green space will be deed restricted as green space. There, there, you're limited with what you can do. Gazebo's, you could put a fishing pond in, you could put a, anything that's generally natural, a walking trail. Can't pave over, you really, for the most part, can't put, uh, buildings up there. But, um, a future council may decide to sell the school and allow that for some sort of different use. We have no idea. I don't think this council, I don't want to speak for everyone, obviously, but would, would, would want to do it. But there are other income opportunities besides the lease on, the current lease that is held by what used to be Family Promise, I forget the name of the company they changed to, uh, that's in the convent, that's twelve thousand dollars here, which also helps pay for the, the project. Acquisition.
I personally think it's a good idea to purchase the property, and you've got all these grant opportunities that you haven't firmly held.
Sure.
Heard back from.
And this math is, and, and we expedited this process a little bit, because we didn't expect the answer on that five hundred thousand dollar grant until September. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here just yet. We'd probably be here in summer, or, or September, or October. We were floored that we got it, and we were floored that the decision came so quick, within months. But when this opportunity comes up, because it's not like they listed this property for sale, when the opportunity comes up, and then you see the grant opportunity, what you do is, before you get a decision from the public, or, or, or you get warm support from the council, and before you get, uh, support from the public that we required, you have to apply for that grant right then and there, where that opportunity dries up. So this math that I put on social media, I put in the letter, we put in the letter, is prior to any possible future grants, so.
Yeah, so when.
It's a worst-case scenario, taking the building out of the equation.
Yeah. So when you sent out the letter, which I got, which is there, I like, I like the content of it.
It was a little long, I'm sorry, but we wanted to get all the facts.
I read every word. So I thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak, and, uh, I'm definitely for it, and, uh, I just hope everything works out, and it's a definitely be an asset for the borough.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schlot. You're, sir, you're next. I promise you.
No, you, you jumped up first.
You don't have to state your name if you're signing.
My name's Michelle Lambert. I am a resident on Mount Vernon Avenue and have been in the borough for forty-seven years, my entire life.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Um, number one, I have no connection to charity after forty-seven years of being in the borough.
Mm-hmm.
It should not be a part of why this council makes this decision. And I apologize for my upsetness about that, but state and church should not be mixed. If you vote that way because you were a part of charity, that's one thing, but to use that to this, resident, to the residents, is not acceptable to me. I do not have children. I would not use the park. I would not use the open space. It would increase police need in that area due to the bordering of the towns that we have there. But my biggest question for the council is, how are we going to validate who is voting? We know that we have neighboring towns that use Brookhaven's mailing address. How are we going to verify that the person that's voting is a owner of a property in Brookhaven Borough?
Government-issued ID, folks that rent are permitted to vote.
Okay, but what about Parkside, Upland, Chester Township, that runs with a Brookhaven mailing address?
By ID.
Your ID will also show Brookhaven. When I lived temporarily in Parkside, my Parkside address showed Brookhaven.
Well, we have, we have, we have faith in our thirteen volunteers that can validate.
But my ask as a resident is, how are you going to confirm that?
Street address.
Because I have, by street address, it's really just that simple.
That's how you do for voting.
It's, it's the same way.
But you.
Well, actually, it's not, it's actually not required for voting. I produced mine because I.
I do, too. But you have a book also that you're utilizing. Are you going to have it on the street? That's my question.
Yes, yep.
To support that.
Yep.
But I would.
And that point was brought up by other individuals.
I know it was.
No, I agree.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I agree.
But.
By the committee as well.
I feel that we need to take out this sentimentality of charity, because it is not applicable to all.
Michelle, speaking for myself, speaking for myself, that, that's not my reason. It was in Mr. Wills' opening statement, but I, I fully understand and respect that opinion.
But that's all I have to say about it. I want to make sure that when we do get the votes, that it's from people that are required in our, in our borough to vote.
And, and I, I will confirm with Mr. Wills, we don't want to get it too in, in, in public. If, I, I don't think you can, you can't make voting public, but we, we'll do our best to validate that, so. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good afternoon, sir.
Peter Macias, Marshall Road. Have, has consideration been given to the incremental maintenance costs and the lady said about police? So the figure that you're giving here of fifteen to twenty dollars, is that just the debt service?
Correct. Policing, you're not going to require much more policing. It's already open space. Kids already hang out there. I, I don't.
I'm sure not, yeah.
There's not, they're already going down there. Yeah, they, they patrol the lots. There's not going to be any additional costs for his policing goes. I would estimate, and the public works supervisor tends to agree, four hundred dollars a year in gas. The, the, the gentlemen are already, the public works team is already on site. Probably another day of cutting. Where's Mr. Guthrie at? Day of cutting?
Four hours.
Every, four hours every two weeks?
Uh, peak growing season every week, um, August, part of September, every two weeks.
Four hundred dollars in gas a year, five hundred?
Probably close to that.
I mean, to put you on the spot, yeah, so there's, there's your answer there.
And then, um, if you were to purchase the property, the building, what would, what would the cost be to, like, keep that under maintenance? I'm sure the archdiocese is.
I would, I would guess four. It would, has to be heated during the cold months, and, and that's it. And, and the water would be on, not used, because it has, it's required to have a sprinkler system. If I could estimate, and this is just an estimate, five hundred dollars a month to heat it for, for the cold month. Yeah, yeah, it, it's not cheap. It's not cheap. It's a big building.
The figure.
At least. Well, you're not keeping it at sixty-five degrees, keep in mind, but, but we can, we'll get those exact figures. And you're right, that shouldn't have been included in the letter.
Okay, and fifteen to twenty dollars, is that?
That is without, that is without finding the money elsewhere, which we are confident we've already done. That is.
That's taking into consideration the five hundred thousand that you're going to get, and then the, the difference.
Yes.
Financed.
If we have to pay the full, if we have to pay the full price, it'll be around twenty if they stick to their original agree, verbal agreement, it should save one point three million dollars, it would be sixteen dollars. Per household, not per person, per year, per household.
Okay, and then do you, maybe Mr. Wills can answer.
Mm-hmm.
Do you think that they came up with this verbal thing to just ask for more money from the borough?
You, you, you mean the, the verbal offer they had?
The verbal that they wouldn't disclose.
I don't think Mr. Wills would appreciate me saying this, but I think it's a load of malarkey. But it, it's a negotiating tactic, in my opinion. That's only my opinion.
Okay, then, uh, one more thing about the seventy percent approval.
Uh-huh.
Is that of those who vote, or?
It is not of residents, those who vote. So if, if you're opposed or in favor of, please vote. So you have an entire week to vote, it's not crammed into a day.
There'd be nothing stopping an individual from going around and soliciting.
No.
Votes.
You can do, you can do that. It, now, it's, it's not legally binding. If it's sixty-eight, if it's sixty-eight, sixty-nine percent, we have a decision to make sure. If it's fifty percent, no, we can't, there's nothing we can do.
Seventy.
We just came up with it. It was, it was.
Council as a whole, that was.
Council as a whole. Well, if you go fifty-one percent, it's not fair to half the borough, it's, you know, I wanted to go seventy-five at first, but we, we settled on seventy percent. So, and we would not have even initiated any of this if we didn't feel that we would get close to seventy percent, so, which, we could be wrong, we feel we do, the people will rightfully decide, so.
The borough is looking to receive overwhelming consensus on this project, and that would be, the borough came up with a figure of seventy percent in favor. Obviously, if the vote is taken, and it's a fifty-one percent yes and forty-nine percent no, then the borough would not be proceeding with this project. Again, the borough will listen to the voices of its residents, and as I indicated, your voices are going to be heard, and you are all, again, encouraged to participate in the voting process, which will, what, occur in two weeks, I believe?
A, a week from Monday.
A week from Monday.
A week from Monday. Again, March fourth to the eighth, ten, ten AM to eight PM.
And we have a wide variety of volunteers who will be manning the voting stations, and we expect complete integrity in this particular voting.
Listen, this isn't thirteen friends that are on this committee. Look, I'm sure we all respect each other, but, believe me, if, if someone sees something funny going on, sure, if someone comes in and they see him stuff five no's in there, they're going to notice, they're going to be right here, so, yeah.
And then, it's not really a criticism, but I, I read through the letter, and then I didn't really know about this particular meeting, so my wife had reminded me that there was going to be a special meeting, so I, I thought maybe that should have been in the letter. So, thank you.
I thought it was in the letter. We had seventeen proofreaders, we should have had eighteen, I guess.
Um, I didn't see it in the letter.
Oh, okay. Well, yeah, we, we saturated on Facebook.
Mr. President, just a reminder as well, folks, that there is, there are two more opportunities for you to come out and express your opinions about this. So this coming Monday, we have a council workshop at seven PM. Seven PM, excuse me, right here, is always open to the public. And then Monday, March fourth, is regularly scheduled council meeting at seven PM. You're always welcome to attend those meetings as well. Thank you.
Come on up. Good afternoon. If you're signing, you don't have to state your name.
I've lived here for sixteen years. I own the one point four acres behind McDonald's Park lot. Um, so my property backs right by the, um, park that's by.
Eaton Park.
Eaton, yeah. I can tell you from a hundred percent certainty, hardly, most of the days, nobody is there. So we have many parks that we have and open space, as well as we had all that open space that we gave to Giant. So for me, it's this, although insulting that we're so involved with green space, but we don't utilize half the things.
Can I, can I just interject one quick thing, and I, you have as much time as, as you want. No one on, up here was, well, the mayor was on the council at, at the time.
Anyway, we're speaking about.
Yeah, but, and, yeah, I, I read a lot about, about that ship sailing. I think it would have been different if you had this council there, but you're right, you're right. They let it go.
We have so many vacant stores, and I've lived here for sixteen years, and you can fact-checking on Zillow, my taxes have gone up three thousand dollars since I've lived here, property tax alone. People are living on fixed budgets and elderly, and to me, I read this, um, paper a few times, and it's very misleading that it's just going to be twenty dollars per household, because it clearly states that this does not include any potential capital improvement projects. So that's going to be in addition to, and to me.
Well, that, for, yeah, for the building. Mm-hmm, yep.
So for me, it would have been better received if I received that, and then what the plans would possibly be, and how much additional that may be.
It ha, it happened so fast, there.
Right, so.
The plan is to mothball the building.
I, I understand, but whatever, you know, capital project you're going to do is going to be another cost to people. So it's basically us handing you a blank check, and that's where I feel it's not, it's not sixteen to twenty dollars per household. That's for the, the land in itself, and not whatever project upkeep and everything on that.
With the exclusion of the building and any, any other project.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, you're, you're right.
Yes, and then also, it is a little insulting that I come to vote for big, small, any, I, I come voters all the time. I'm never asked ID, so I can vote for political things and no ID, and now we have to bring ID, so it's, it's a little.
We have, yeah, no, and I, I understand.
But also.
It's to prevent surrounding neighborhoods, because let's face it, you might have, you might have, anyone, is it West, West Chilton or East Chilton?
Chobe Farms is.
Well, 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 Park, Parkside, it's either West Chilton or East Chilton.
My turn.
You might have a few of those folks come here and say, well, you know what, I want this, because I don't want.
I'm a little scared about, towards renters. If you leave, you're paying, this is my mortgage that's going up, not renters, I'm sorry. If they leave tomorrow, the homeowner is carrying that burden of paying those taxes, not the renter. So to me, we should be bringing a mortgage deed at ten ninety-nine something, but it is for mortgage people that are stake vested. People, no offense, are living with their parents, thirty, forty years old, still living with their parents, they're not responsible for the taxes.
I under, yeah, I understand, I, we, we have no control over that, but.
You guys own a mortgage deed, it's me, not my husband, so it would be just me.
That, that may bring a sizable civil action against the borough, would you, would you agree?
It's also an insult to the people that own.
We've also had renters that have rented for twenty years. My mother-in-law's rented for twelve years.
That's, that's fine, but that's one person, but then, if I owned a home and I have to rely on renters, and I have to get a renter in for a year, it's my burden to pay that tax.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't understand how we're just, hey, anybody can vote. It's pretty much to me the definition of people in New York, a migrant, that's not even here legally, getting to vote because they get to vote on their surroundings. So to me, it's, I'm a stakeholder, I, I pay my mortgage, I pay my taxes, and my taxes have gone up in the sixteen years, over three thousand dollars for property tax alone. I look, and how do we, because look on Zillow, it's definitely correct.
Some have, particularly with the reassessment. Yeah, she's absolutely right, yeah.
Until we perfect what's going on in our, our community and, and what we have, it, to me, it just shows neglect to bleed out and, and create more. This is the most trash I've seen around, especially on my own property, um, and we have vacant store after vacant store, and I.
We actually had thirty-nine as of two thousand eighteen, and we're down to nine, so.
That's for right now.
And, and I've, I've made no less than a thousand calls to fill vacant stores. PJ Willihams, oh, oh, I have a notch my belt, there's, there's one vacant, big vacancy. We are always working in vacant stores, we're down, we're down to nine, might be nine or eleven, because we have a couple that are coming in, but we had, we had thirty, thirty-eight, thirty-nine or more, yeah.
And that's for right now, as a year.
I can't control future economy, I just can't control the current economy, but yeah.
We had to control the future, we weren't giving a complete, the, the letter's very misleading, it's just going to be sixteen to twenty dollars a house, that, that's not true, by what.
Well, it's, it's, it says with the, with the exception of capital improvement.
Right, so that's basically a, a way of leading people just to, it's basically just giving you a blank check and trusting that.
Well, we can, we can update with that, with, we can update that with a statement on social media, because, because I.
We're working in a week or two.
Yeah.
And we don't even know exactly how much it's honestly going to cost people. It's not sixteen to twenty dollars, and I can almost guarantee myself that if you vote this way.
You also have a million and a half dollars in grants out, and then that doesn't include any, any grants that may pop up in the future, so keep that on.
And if we don't get those grants, then what happens if we go forward with this, and we don't get all the grants that we, we're thinking, are these going to be taxes?
The current council has no interest in, in spending any money on that building, period. That, that's, it's just as simple as that, you can, you can mothball it.
Right, so whatever project we choose to do.
This is to prevent, the, the public will assist in any future projects, too, we've been clear on that, and we'll, we'll reiterate that. However, not, not only is it purposed to preserve green space, it's to prevent further taxing our police and, and our residents, and the entire southern portion of Brookhaven.
Sure, have you guys done studies of what, of how much utilization has been to the green spaces that we currently have?
Most of, most of our green space, and we fully support youth sports, was given to youth sports. This would be, this would be our largest, this would be our largest part. We also hold our family day on a, on a hot parking lot every year, right here, right here outside this building. We launch our parade, which is one of our most popular, uh, community events.
Yeah.
From Our Lady of Charity. If someone comes and buys it, that's, that's going away, I guarantee you that. You're not just going to, they're not just going to hand over use of that, like...
We can't do something for all this money for just a parade route.
It's not, well, it's beyond, it's beyond, it's beyond the parade, but yeah.
There's clearly other spaces that you can do, Family Day, right next to Giant, the huge lot. So to us to just keep doing green spacing, green space, you haven't done any study...
Well, that's actually a baseball field, we can't, we can't use that for that.
Okay. There's still green spaces that we haven't looked at, how much we're even utilizing that. And if you look at Eaton Park, I can clearly tell you it's not being utilized at all. My entire point is we need to look at the green space.
All right, let, let, let...
Yeah, the green space.
It's her turn, not the audience.
And the way we're conducting voters, I just don't think it's fair or correct for people to have, if you have 10 family members in your home, come vote, it should honestly be who's on the mortgage because that's the stakeholders and I'm responsible for my taxes.
That would be afraid of the civil action if we helped that. But I do appreciate your comments and you brought up valid points and we, we will amend our statement. Thank you. Come on up, man.
Mr. President, I have to excuse myself and go to the scout event.
Okay, enjoy.
Hello, thank you for...
Kindly sign in, you don't have to state your name, you can sign in when you're done.
I'll state my name. It's Rosalynn Mayo, I live in Hilltop.
Okay.
Before that, I lived on Creekside. So I've been in Brookhaven, I want to say about 12 years. I went to Char...
We have quiet in the back, we have someone speaking, please.
I went to Our Lady of Charity and I don't have any emotional attachment to the building and I didn't get the sense either that there was any sense of religiosity behind the decision. I just want to let you guys know that.
Okay.
I also understand that even if someone isn't using the green space, it's important for us to gobble up what we can because otherwise it will be developed. I also have concerns about the costs and I think I heard you say that for future capital projects, residents would be involved in those decisions.
Uh huh, yep.
So that's important because we are keeping our eye on taxes and with the economy being the way it is...
It's a fragmented economy, yep.
Yeah, especially people on a fixed income, we're nervous about that. So I just wanted to say I appreciate the opportunity to come and hear about it, I learned a lot and I'm actually for the idea because I, I see that you've put some guardrails in place for us, to reassure us about future costs.
Well, again, it's important that the people vote.
Sure.
Whether you're opposed or...
For capital projects as well.
Yep.
And so, again, I just want to reiterate that even in spite of the potential for costs, we could end up with a really congested area if we don't control how, what land left is used. So I do appreciate that.
And we're, yeah, we're already congested.
Yeah.
How much more can you take?
Exactly. I'm, sometimes I feel like it's turning into Springfield. So that's really all I had to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Good afternoon.
Excuse my voice, I've kind of lost it. My name is Jenny McKay, I live right here on Mount Vernon Avenue and I kind of back up to Eaton Park. I'm all for open green space. I think it's great for our children. I will, I disagree with the young lady that's before regarding Eaton Park. I'm up there once or twice a day. I have seen, I even just saw a group of young teenage girls sitting down, having a nice little picnic, catching up and just sitting around talking and that was just the other night in the cold weather. In the spring and the summer, that park is used. I see cars constantly parked out front and people are coming out with their young children and they're on the swings, they're on the jamboree, whatever. And then I also see there's a group of people that I know for a fact go there at least three or four times a week because if you do five loops around that trail, it's a one-mile walk. And these ladies do it four or five times a week because I am there, I run into that. And so I disagree with the lady saying that it is not used, it is used. The rec board holds a summer program, they get the library, from the local libraries and they come and they get reading hours and children come and they, they're there for hours at that point because it's a beautiful day and they have, they have young children read to another group of young children. So I, that, and we use it for the concerts in the park, so it is being used and I'm thankful for it, that it's up the street from it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that was also brought to us by a 50% matching grant. That was two councils ago, they did a good job with it. If anyone remembers how Eaton Park looked 10 years ago, it was absolutely unusable. So it's, they could have done a little better job, in my opinion, but overall, it's a good park. I would have designed it a little different, but... Next. Surely there must be someone else that would like to keep us all together for a few more minutes. Go Flyers, and how you doing, sir?
I'm doing great. My name's Sam Greenall, Victor Avenue, Brookhaven.
Good afternoon.
Resident of Brookhaven since I was eight years old, except for a 10-year period right after I got married. I hear a lot of back and forth about what we should do with this space. If you remember in this area, the last 10 years, there was a big move in Middletown, no city.
Yeah, I remember the signs.
Remember that?
Yeah.
All the people were opposed to it, the Franklin property. Okay? Anyone that's opposed to this, write out Baltimore Park.
They kind of nuked the earth over there, I get it, yeah.
From the rocky runway down to that bottom of that hill is densely populated, okay? My opinion on this is, we as residents of Brookhaven and this council have an opportunity to decide our own fate. If we don't pursue and follow through, purchase this property, who knows what's going to happen to it.
That's our concern, sir.
But I can pretty much guarantee you, it will be dense. Okay? So just wanted to throw my two cents in there.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
And make no mistake, this will sell. This will sell. And it, and, and we're 100% that this will sell, so. Have a good afternoon, sir. Anyone else? Come on up. Good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon. Sue Colt, Melton Drive. Lived in Brookhaven, born in Brookhaven.
Nice to meet you in person, I've known you on Facebook for years.
Yes, yes. I am, it's a gift to keep any land in Brookhaven as a green space. I use Eaton Park or the municipal pathway every day, five days a week to walk. Other people don't use it, that's on them, but it's a healthy way to, you know, keep in shape, so I make sure I use my parks and I'm grateful for this opportunity to have the charity space open to the public for future use. It makes great sense to me.
Thank you.
I wouldn't want it to be used for anything else. Thank you.
Appreciate your opinion. I personally have all day, so like, like everyone to speak if they wish. Anyone else? I'm not leaving until someone else comes up. Counsel, are there any other points or concerns?
Well, I just think that we do need just to do a little bit more homework on the ones that have mentioned, you know, obviously cleaning up the letter a little bit so we have that accurate information because though, one gentleman brought up about, Peter, I think it was, in reference to the maintenance, you know, so we need to get accurate information on what that actual cost would be and I know we're guesstimating on some of it, but we do have, you know, what it would take to maintain that space if we do acquire it, so I feel that...
It has to be heated at a, I'm not, I'm not going to lie and say what the temperature is, I guess it'd be in the...
50, 55.
50, 50, 55?
Yeah.
During the cold months because it's required a sprinkler system, so yeah, there's going to be that cost. However, there's no real water use or anything, it's on, but it's not being used and that's really all we could think of when we, when we reviewed it, so.
And I think we, we just also need to address Michelle's concerns with, on how it's going to be...
Michelle had plenty of good concerns brought up and I'll reach out to Michelle.
For the voting as well, to make sure that we have the actual registry is correct.